All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM, July 30th, Tuesday. Welcome everybody to our meeting of the Northport Field Board Selectmen. If you'll all rise and salute the flag.
Flagpole agents to the flag. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd.
That's you?
Brooke wasn't here.
Oh, so moved.
And I'll second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 16th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That came out louder than I expected.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number three for $274,694.40. School warrant number 1002 for $66,778.64. General warrant number 1003 for $419,891.91. And the wastewater treatment plant upgrade warrant 1004 for $1,026,469.69.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, we have a spending request, $487 for a weed whacker for the Highway Department. And we wanted a little bit more information before we approved that, and that's with all the attachments. Mike, did you have?
Yes, I had a discussion with Jason. And because first off, I wanted to make sure he was buying a commercial grade one, and he is, it's a still, which I've always bought for landscaping use because they just last a lot longer than the homeowner weed whackers. And I wanted to know how he was procuring it and if he was getting multiple prices. But he's going off the state bid list, which I think is fine for procurement purposes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the $487 for the weed whacker for the Highway Department.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Landfill swales, we're not doing that?
The next meeting.
Next meeting, okay.
There's some more requirements we need to look at.
We just got the information back from the Town Council today.
Okay. All right. All right, old business. We have the fiscal year '25 appointments. And we're gonna go through these and we'll read them off. We're gonna take turns, one page at a time. And at the end, we'll vote them as read. All right. The following persons are appointed by the Board of Selectmen to the offices hereafter named to begin a new term of service effective July 1st, 2024. Town Administrator Michael Slasic. Administrative Assistant to the Selectman Ashley Berry. Animal Control Officer Jeff Martin. Assistant Animal Control Officer Jesse Berard. Bell Ringer Richard Smith. Assistant Bell Ringer Patricia Miller. Board of Overseers Lieutenant Ryan Daly. Building Inspector John Kuchar. Local Inspector Nelson Burlingame. CMRPC alternate William King. Caretaker of Town Clock is vacant, so if anybody wants to do that, let us know. Council on Aging Director Courtney Rivera. E-911 Coordinator Chief Mark Smith. Emergency Management Director Ann Adams. Fence viewers are both vacant. Fire Chief Darren Anderson. Deputy Fire Chief Keith Marshall. Assistant Fire Chief is vacant. Gas Inspector Troy Allen. Assistant Gas Inspector James Bergeron. Gypsy Moth and Elm Tree Superintendent Jason Benoit. Hazardous Waste Coordinator Ethan Millad. Harbor Master Ryan Daly. Historian Brandon Avery. Insurance Commissioner Ashley Berry. Janitor of Town Offices Tom Thomas Minor. Local Emergency Planning Chief Mark Smith. Chief Darren Anderson, Jason Benoit, and Ann Adams. Lumber Surveyors Chet LeBelichick, Ross Huback, and Parking Fines Clerk Tara Hayes.
All right, now we're gonna go. Plumbing Inspector Troy Allen. Assistant Plumbing Inspector James Bergeron. Police Chief Mark Smith. Lieutenant Ryan Daly. Sergeant David Churchy. Officer Jeff Martin. Officer Mark Sawyer. Officer John Francis. Officer Nicholas Newman. Public Wire Karen Huback. Quabog Valley Economic Development James Metcalf. Safety Inspector Darren Anderson. SCM Elderbus Board of Directors Jason Petritas. Superintendent of Streets, Highways, Sidewalks, and Bridges, Jason Benoit. Town Accountant Sheila LeBlank. Town Collector Elizabeth Clemens. Town Council Copelman and Page. Town Hall Agent is vacant. Town Treasurer Allison Bulger. Veterans Agent Holly Kularski. Webmaster Tara Hayes. Wire Inspector Troy Brown. Assistant Wire Inspector Keith Fontaine. Zoning Enforcement Officer John Kuchar. Agricultural Commission is William King and James Mendala. And there are three vacancies on that. The ARPA Advisory Committee is Ethan Millad, William King, Robert Locatelli, Christopher Caputo, and Lena Gertan. Or Lena Gertan. And Jason Petritas Ex officio, I'll just finish that one out.
Okay. Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Yep, page 19.
Capital Improvement Planning Committee Tara Hayes, at-large member. Mikhail Sukharov, at-large member. Jason Petritas, Selectmen's representative. Vacant Position Planning Board Representative. Joseph Trent Acosta, Finance Committee Representative. Patrick Gustafson, Alternate Vacant Alternate. Conservation Commission Brandon Avery. Christine Morrison. John Turner. Samuel Biagetti. Sadie Saldana, sorry, I'm gonna butcher all these names. Council on Aging Judith Manning. Mary Tina. Tara Hayes. Florine Martel. Dorothy Raveen. Diane Hopkins. Downtown Development Committee Sheila Orsi. Jack McClintock. Marilyn Borst. Ethan Millad. Eva Brown. Brandon Avery. Election Workers, Clerks, and Inspectors. For the Republicans, we have Warden Lisa Kularski. Deputy Warden Holly Kularski. Democrats, we have Warden Dorothy Raveen. Deputy Warden Rita Lemieux. And Deputy Warden Sheila Buzzell.
Unenrolled Deputy Warden Susan St. John. Deputy Warden Beverly Mimo. Deputy Warden Carol Ryback. And then Elizabeth Doherty, Sheila LeBlank, Joanne Ford, Priscilla Johnson, Ann Genetti, Mary Catherine Bicic. Maureen Caramello. Finance Committee and Special Town Employees. We interviewed most of the members of the Finance Committee, and we've gotten written responses from the other members. So, this Finance Committee and Special Town Employees, Chester LeBelichick, Kathleen Crevear, Robert Filipkowski, Bill King, Joseph Trent Acosta, Robert Locatelli, and Roger Brooks. Bob Locatelli and Roger Brooks are alternates. Town House Committee James Buzzell, Patricia Miller. Gene Underwood, Maureen Waslawski. Eva Brown, Marilyn Borst, Sue Lewandowski, Maureen Caramello, Brandon Avery. Historic Commission Marilyn Borst, Jack McClintock.
Insurance Advisory Committee is Allison Bulger, Ex officio Aram Tumazin. Priscilla Johnson, Damian Saret. Tim McCormick, Tara Hayes, and Kim George Court. Library Building Maintenance Committee is Thomas Scowran, Peg Bodine, Helen Foyle, Scott Norrie, Ellen Smith, Dave Marr, Amy Vasella, Ex officio. Although, will that change?
It'll change, but she's not, she hasn't resigned technically yet, so.
Okay. Local Cultural Council Karen Erickson is Chair. Connie Moore Co-Chair. Gillian Phillips Secretary. Kaylee Keeney, excuse me, and Nancy Waldron. Local Public Access Committee is Jake Anderson, Paul LeBlank, Ellen Smith, Sheila Orsi, and Byron Aik. Additional Videographers Corey McIntosh, Nathan Gershman, and Luke Anderson. And Northport Field Emergency Management Agency, Ann Adams is Director. Chris Marinin is Deputy Director. Robert Filipkowski. Suzanne Lewandowski. Charles Buchanan. Brenda LeCare. Thank you. Gino Caramello Senior. Sean Adams. Gino Caramello Junior. John Magario. Michael Hinckley. Lori Riel. Pete Orsi is the Fire Department Liaison.
NB Helps Kathleen Crevear. And three vacant positions. Parks and Recreation Committee Brandon Avery. Tara Hayes. Jamie Gilman. Andrew Weevil. Vacant Position. Board of Registars Jennifer Marquise. Susan Toomey. Stanley Hansen. Helen Foyle. Safety Committee Mark Smith, Ex officiato. Darren Anderson, Ex officiato. Jason Benoit, Ex officiato. Eric Cardenas. Jamie Fulman. Peter Shipman. Patrick Kirsty. And Ann Adams.
Sewer Commissioners and Special Town Employees Donald Smith, Charles Haddock, Kevin Valeri. Sewer Superintendent Eric Cardenas. Assistant Superintendent. Do we have one now?
No, he was talking.
Oh, wonderful. That's vacant. Operator Wastewater Treatment Plant Michael Mercandante. Zoning Board of Appeals Karen Huback. Tara Hayes. Michelle Petritas. And an alternate Carol Ryback. I'll entertain a motion to appoint all those appointments as read.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I don't believe so.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, Highway Fuel. What were we gonna talk about with that on there?
You asked me to look into alternatives to the bid that we did internally. I did look for some of the state bids, and there weren't a lot. There's not as many outlets as there used to be. But I did find out that Hardwick recently did a bid, in fact, last month. The results are on there. And they selected RJ McDonald for diesel fuel. And it's at a fixed price, at I think a reasonable price. I was going to ask the Board if they're interested in participating in that bid. I called RJ McDonald. They said they would honor the price to us. And it was a public bid, so it conforms to the procurement laws. If you're interested, I can ask them to send a contract. Now, that did not include gasoline, but it did include diesel, which is the majority of the fuel used by the Highway Department. We'd either have to get a different supplier for gasoline because they didn't bid it, or use the procedure that's currently used by the Police Department at the local station.
Right, and we talked about doing that anyway.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to procure a contract from RJ McDonald, and we can discuss that at our next meeting.
All right.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, this looks good to me, too.
Yeah, I just have a question. So, this price of diesel, it's $3.19 a gallon, it says? We'd be locked in at this price?
We'd be locked in at that price.
What happens if it, you know, generally goes under? Like, say, the local gas station goes to, I don't know, let's say $2.50 a gallon. It's hopeful, but if it does, we're locked in at a higher rate paying here? I'm just curious.
We would technically be, yes.
Okay.
It's what is termed as a requirements contract under contract law. We're locked in to buy what, buying what we require.
Okay, I mean, it is a good price compared to what they are now, so.
Yeah. I haven't seen diesel in that price, at that price, in a long time.
Right.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, Poll Hearing. 6:15. All right, so we're gonna jump ahead to, we have a poll hearing for Air Street. So, do we have anyone here for that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Larry working as the designer that designed this job.
Okay. So, what's the, are there any butters here? No butters, okay. So, what kind of poll are you putting in? Is it just a?
It's just another poll to extend the secondary. The customer wanted to remove his overhead service and go underground.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the poll petition for Air Street.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No.
No.
Anybody wanna be against it, I guess? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't think I've ever had anybody complain about one.
I don't, yeah.
All right. So, Police Policies. Did you guys have a chance to read those?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the new policies as written by the Chief of Police sent to us for approval. I guess that's.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
No.
No, they seem like standard operating.
Pretty reasonable.
Yep.
Do we know what the police policies are?
Oh, it was.
Do you have them on there?
I have them on here. Yep, just one sec.
Mike, did you have anything to add on that?
I don't have anything to add, but I can get you copies if you wanna see them. They're, well, they're many pages.
It's like 100 pages of, oops, of policies and procedures.
There's four or five different policies that are multiple pages.
Yep, it's Use of Force Policy, Vehicular Pursuits, Responding to Persons Affected by Mental Health Issues or in Crisis, and Domestic Violence. So, it's all of those policies.
These are all based on mass general law and, yeah, and we have to approve them, so. Well, we don't have to approve them, we can tell them no, but they are what they are, so.
If there's an interest, I can make a copy available for review in the Selectmen's Office.
Can we put them on the website?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah. Maybe that would work under the Police page, and then.
All right. So, Senior Center Project Completion. We had a request to sign off on the completion of the roof work done at the Senior Center. And we did not have the building, the building permit signed off by the Building Inspector at the time. But since then, he has gone and inspected it. And we also had a rep from the manufacturer of the roofing come out and look at it, and they said it's okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve of the project completion for the Senior Center Roof.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Hold on. Discussion, Brooke?
No.
John?
Do we know, that was grant money that did that? Do we know if there was any left because they were gonna do more work inside?
Yes, there was some left. I'm not, I don't have the number right now, but there was some leftover.
Do we know, because it was talk of a camp exit or the ceiling tiles inside to be replaced as the projects progressed? If there was money enough? I'm just curious if we're not gonna just give the remainder of the money back?
No, we're not. I discussed it with the CMRPC representative. He didn't have the exact number available when I spoke to him, but I can get that number. But our intent is to use all of the money.
Well, I just wanna make sure, because we had talked about that.
Yes. There's the. Yes, the exit is an issue. Also, the over-the-stove doesn't have an ancil system, a fire suppression system. So, there's plenty of things that need to be done there.
Okay, as long as the grant money doesn't go back.
It won't.
All right. New business. Water Department Survey. That's you?
Yes.
All right. You wanna tell us about that, or?
It is a survey, it's called the Sanitary Survey. It's done every three years. Where a nasty EP sends a representative out, and they come through the plant and all of our properties and find wrong whatever they possibly can. So, like I said, every three years, we get some type of deficiency or a violation. We take corrective measures according to their mass general, or mass laws according to drinking water. So, this year, we had a violation that they do often. Violations are different from deficiencies. A violation, we actually have to put it into our customer care report every year. Nothing that has been done by us. This is the way the plant has been operated for 24 years since it was built. So, like I said, they do them every year, just buying something they can. Don't want anybody to be scared of any of these violations and stuff that's gonna affect anybody's health. A violation, it is important, but it is, no one's found anything about it for 24 years, but they just finally hit us on it. All of our chemical, major chemical pumps do shut down when the plant shuts down and the critical chemical alarm goes off. What happens is, there's two pumps, and they're still pumping chemicals for like three more minutes. As one of our last tanks is level drawn as opposed to pump-driven. So, unfortunately, it runs for three more minutes after the shutdown. For some reason, that was fine for, like I said, 24 years, and now they're giving us a violation. Nothing more than a programming issue, which we already have a contracted company that takes care of all of our SCADA system. I've already got money set aside for that, in case things like this do happen. We'll be calling them to take care of that. That's not a big deal. Oh, it is, but it isn't. Like I said, it's one of those gray areas where they find things wrong. Another deficiency was saying that our alarms, instrumentation, and controls interlocks for non-critical chemicals are not being tested quarterly. We've never had to do this before. Don't know why they've cited us on it. I'm actually drafting a letter back to the Sanitary Survey, Stacy Johnson, who did this, to kinda give us further explanation as to some of these things. They cite general laws, I've looked them up, and there's actually, I can't find what she's quoting for me to do under the mass CMR laws. Next one would be Belle Hill Storage Tank does not have a representative tab to sample water from the tank. We do. Don't know why it's on here. It's called our 100-foot tap. It's where our continuous monitoring is derived from all day long, 24 hours a day. I don't know what that's about, so like I said, another question to hear about that. And the last deficiency was, we're not reporting the average of all pH measurements collected during the day on monthly reporting forms. Never knew we had to, we're going to do it now. Like I said, that's just another simple, having LCS controls, program it in, onto an Excel sheet that gets recorded. I actually have to get specifics. Do they want the recordings every 15 minutes? Do they want them every hour? You know? So, I'll have to dig further into the laws. Like I said, I can't find the exact wording from DEP yet on that. But like I said, a quick phone call and an email will have all the specifics done.
All right, can you just forward those answers to us, so we know?
Absolutely.
After your?
And the corrective action, yeah, I'll keep you guys in the loop of the corrective actions we take, so.
And can I just ask one thing? Because the only thing on there that did concern me a little bit was the farm.
Oh.
That she mentioned, that was like, yeah, so I just.
I think that's actually been on there for all 24 years of our sanitary surveys, and is working with the farm.
Yep.
That was something that was brought up, I'd say in 2013 or 14 was the last time they did a large study. Had a representative from DEP to come in, help the Water Department out, did this great big study, and it was going to be up to the Planning Board to adopt the new zoning bylaws could help protect the water source better.
Yep.
And the Planning Board had voted it down at the time.
Okay.
So.
So, is this something that we should maybe just look into again and make sure?
I would love to. It's on my bucket list of things to do. Once I do some other corrective actions at the plant, I mean, I've still got projects I wanna get done. Like I said, they kinda get put on the back burner. Yeah, there's full, like I said, there's a full complete study that was done back then about everything.
Yeah.
Setting up, you know, because we have a federal protection laws, our Zone A, which is up to the 100-foot away from the edge
Okay.
of the pond. Zone B would be up to 400 feet away.
Okay.
We only can enforce anything up to the 100 feet away right now, so.
So, and they are more than 100 feet away?
Yes.
Got it.
They're within the 400-foot boundary.
Okay.
I can't do anything about it, so legally.
So, it would then be up to the Planning Board to kinda look?
Planning Board issue at that point to adopt the zoning.
Is it possible, do you test the water then, up there? Just to make sure none of that is getting into our drinking water? Okay.
We do test it, and we have the colI in the water, the drinking water that comes back in our raw water every single test, so we test monthly for that.
Okay. And it's at typical levels?
That is, yeah, I don't know if, you know, we've never done like full counts of it, that would be like doing a whole different study to see, you know, if it's more on that side of the pond versus another side of the pond. That's nothing we've really gotten into, but it is there.
I guess for me, that would be, I feel like that would be an important thing to follow up on.
Most residents don't know that, you know, we are getting a cold that hits in the raw water all the time. We also have to test for the clean water afterwards. There is nothing in there. If there was, we'd have boil orders and tampons up, so. All that stuff's in place to keep everyone safe.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Bill?
Could I ask Jamie if the ECO line economy's changed since you put the aerators in?
No.
Really?
No, that has nothing to do with ECO line. That is only for algae control and to stir up all the dead matter off the bottom of the pond. It was becoming neutrophied. What they call it is, there was no dissolved oxygen
What they call it is there was no dissolved oxygen in the water below ten feet of depth. The pond was dying, so that's what the irrigation system was for. Bring that all up, get all that.
So it has assisted with that aspect?
What's that?
It has assisted with that aspect.
Yes, it actually had, actually putting it's corrected the pH levels quite a bit. And I'm actually adding less of my sodium hydroxide chemical right now than I used to use already, so. It's showing benefits, and we have not had to do an algae treatment since we've put the system in either, so.
Nice.
Monthly algae count, so we have done and all come back great, so.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks. And there's nothing on that that we have to vote on, right? All right, cable franchise contract.
All right, um, last, was it Friday, Vaughn?
Yes.
You contacted me and asked me to check if there was any provisions in our cable contract for senior discounts.
Right.
And I investigated that and found out we don't have a cable contract.
Yep.
It expired in, uh, I think May, May of twenty twenty-one, so it's more than three years out. Uh, and so at that point I wanted to figure out why and how we get a new cable contract. I tried contacting Charter, but their systems are impenetrable. You can't talk to a live person, so I called the state and talked to the regulator. He was aware of it and he said this is common and the excuses he gave kinda made me roll my eyes. He said, oh, COVID. All of the contracts are behind because of COVID and Charter apparently lost whoever their contract specialist was, and I said, three years? And, yeah. So I got the, uh, the email of the current contract specialist and I've sent an email to her and I still haven't gotten a response. But I need to keep on her because we really should have a cable contract in place. That said, when we do negotiate it, I found that Charter does not do, uh, does not do senior discounts. If we got that in the contract, we would be the only one that they have, and I doubt they're gonna do that. And frankly, the cable contracts, we have little that we can negotiate on then with them. You can't negotiate on channel lineup and you can't negotiate on price. So that doesn't leave a lot to, uh, you can negotiate the franchise fee and, and, uh, some service aspects, but that's about all you can do.
Okay. All right, streetlights, Pillsbury Funeral Home. Who wants to take that one?
Um, I can take that one.
Go ahead.
Pillsbury Funeral Home does not wanna pay for lights on poles ten and eleven. Initially, when Ashley sent out the email, it, it said eleven, uh, eleven and twelve. But, um, I did go out and ten is in front of my house, so I know that's that one. Um, and then, you know, eleven is the one right in front of Pillsbury and twelve is the one that they wanna continue paying for. It has the light that shines down onto the business. So, um, I think our discussion has to be about whether or not the town will take on the electricity in those poles or whether we turn them off. And so I spoke to my husband about it and we are happy to take on pole number ten, the one that's in front of our house.
Are those LEDs?
I don't know, so I wanted to check with.
I talked to Tara about it. No, but it's on her list to have them switched over to LEDs.
Okay, so perfect, yeah. And so we'll take on that pole, and I think if I'm being honest, the one outside our house and twelve um, aren't that far away from each other and it might be enough light.
Provides enough.
Yeah, it might provide enough light to turn off eleven and keep those two on, so.
All right.
Sound reasonable.
So I will entertain a motion to which number were you gonna pay for?
Ten.
To have, uh, the candidates pay for the light on ten and turn off eleven, and Pillsbury's gonna keep paying for twelve, right?
Yes.
Sounds correct.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I vote on it if it's about?
Yeah.
Probably, okay.
I mean, you're paying for it. It's not like you're getting some for it. You're not getting paid for it.
Yeah, right, that's true.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Maintenance of flags.
Yes, that was one that I added also. I just want to get a schedule going for cl- flag. You know, putting up the flags, taking them down, maintenance, making sure we're caring for them. Right now they're up and they're kinda getting battered by all the weather that we've had.
One fell down today and was brought into my office, so.
Yeah, so I have some concerns about leaving them up from Memorial Day all the way through Veterans Day. We have a good, you know, three months, well, maybe not quite three months between, no, three months between Fourth of July and Veterans Day. And so I would like to see the flags come down and, you know, be cared for and not be up in the elements throughout. And I, I know that that's, I, I know people love the flags and I do too, believe me, but I, I've seen them get beat up outside my own house and, um, it's, it's really kinda, it's frustrating to see a flag kinda get beaten and torn to shreds. So that would be my hope is that we can kind of come up with a schedule that makes sense for them to be taken care of. And I also, in addition to that, um, I've reached out to Spencer if we wanted something that was a more permanent fixture, because we are a Purple Heart town, and I think that's kind of important and it would be neat to, um, put up the, the same kind of, um, tribute banners for our soldiers and veterans. We could look into something like that if we wanted something that's a little more permanent downtown. So I haven't heard back from them yet, but.
All right, so what are you proposing for, um?
For a schedule?
Yeah.
I would propose that we put them up a week or maybe two weeks before Memorial Day, um, and then take them down a week or two weeks after Fourth of July. And then put them up again a week or two weeks before Veterans Day and then take them down a week to two weeks after Veterans Day.
All right, um, is there a motion?
That would be my motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Oh, we'd have to find a way to put them up and take them down. Volunteers is biggest part of this, no matter what. I mean, I don't have a strong opinion either way. I like to see them up myself, but if they're gonna just get destroyed, then we have to worry about buying new ones. That's gonna become a cost issue, but I mean, your idea of a schedule doesn't sound like a bad idea to me, unless anybody else in town has a strong opinion about it.
All right, what do you all think?
They're about fifty dollars per flag.
How many are there?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Not quite thirty-eight because we were, we didn't put them all up because there was some damage. I, I took two down myself because they were hanging by one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so we're probably.
So it makes sense.
Yeah.
We need to stop buying those flags. We keep buying the same flags. The poles break on.
Well, do they come with poles? Is that what you're buying? The pole and the flag? Because that was another thing that I was thinking about. The, the pole on it is
We need to stop buying, they've been buying those flags for years.
Yeah.
Get the same thing with the holiday, the Christmas flags and what, they keep buying, they, whoever keeps buying them.
Yeah.
Keep buying the same flags and they're cheesy and they don't last.
Okay.
Better flags without that break in the middle of the pole, that's what snaps.
It is, yeah.
Plastic connector.
Yep.
Don't know why they keep buying the same things.
I agree.
In that, couple of years ago, we bought more, but they were, we put up thirty-eight flags. My wife and I the first time to.
Yeah.
All right. Well, um, so we get a motion on the floor to for a schedule of flying and the flags and taking them down and flying them again, uh, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we'll have to look into finding better flags.
I'd be happy to look into that if you want me to do that with the, the tribute banners as well. I can look into the costume pricing and and also Tim has volunteered to help take them down and put them up again too.
Okay, perfect, so yeah, if you wanna do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next thing we have is the fire report for June. Total calls for the month of thirty-nine is one building fire and eight King Road. Six medical assists, four motor vehicle accidents with injuries, one oil or combustible liquid spill, one electrical wiring equipment problem, one power line down, one person in distress, three assist police or other governmental agency, one cover assignment, one good intent call, three false alarms, two system malfunctions, seven smoke detector activations due to malfunctions, one alarm system sounded due to malfunction, one CO detector activation due to malfunction. Seems like there's a lot of malfunctions going on. Two smoke detector activations, no fire, unintentional. One alarm system activation, no fire, unintentional, one severe weather standby, thirteen permits and inspections for the month. And that is, uh, submitted by Chief Darren Anderson. I'll entertain a motion to, uh, accept the fire report for the month of June twenty twenty-four.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, next we have a job description for a coun- council on aging janitor. Brooke, would you read that?
You want me to read the whole thing?
Well, it's gonna be posted to the website.
It's quite a.
Yeah, it's standard, so.
I'll, I'll read the, uh, purpose of the position. How's that?
Yep, that's fine.
The purpose of the position is to perform semi-skilled custodial and maintenance work of the senior center building and grounds under his or her care in a safe, clean, and sanitary condition. The custodian is responsible for cleaning and maintaining and improving upon the efficiency and effectiveness of all areas under his or her direction and control.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description for the janitor at the council on aging.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point something out on here under the physical requirements. It says frequently required to lift, move, and or push furniture and equipment which weigh up to ten pounds and frequently required to lift or move up to thirty pounds. Um, should that number be increased a little bit? I mean, ten pounds and thirty pounds? I would imagine some of the things that this person would have to move is heavier than ten or thirty pounds.
I think you might be right.
I mean, most jobs that I've seen just throw in the number seventy pounds just to cover base of anything you might have to move around in a position.
Yep. Good save, yeah.
Okay.
Up to seventy pounds. May weigh up to, yeah.
All right, well, let's, um.
Vote the original motion down.
Yeah.
And then do a new motion to change it.
Got it.
All right, all in favor?
No.
No. All right, so Vaughn, why don't you give us another motion?
All right, uh, I would like to entertain a motion to increase the weight limit for the, uh, job description here for the janitor, for the senior center to include the wording required to possibly loo-, um, sorry, move up to seventy pounds on occasion instead of the stated ten and thirty pounds.
Still moved.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded?
Oh, sorry.
All right, in discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion to approve the, um, job description as amended.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So we had a spending freeze that was anything over a hundred dollars. We have, um, raised that to two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and we have now a spending request form for anything over two hundred and fifty dollars. It lists the department, the amount of the request, description of the purchase, justification for purchase, whether or not it's a one-time purchase or recurring purchase, whether or not it's on a state contract. And, um, it's, uh, required three quotes.
Well, it's, um, it's required, uh, that's just what, whatever I check off is the required procurement.
Okay. All right, so there's four. Four, um.
Categories?
Yeah, thank you. Four categories for the, um, procurement approval. It's three quotes or sole source and what are the other two?
Invitation for bids and request for, for proposals.
Right, and then it has the, uh, signatures of, uh, the town administrator, who's the chief procurement officer and the chair of the select board. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the spending request form.
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's great.
I have a question. Do you guys want Mike to just approve the spending request or do you want him to approve the procurement and then you guys approve their spending request?
I think that's the way we discussed it at our last meeting was if there was an emergency that we had given authorization for Mike to approve and then we would sign off on it later, but, um, otherwise Mike would sign off on it and then we would sign off on it after.
Yep, I can put something on there for a request for emergency procurement and if it's checked off, then I, I could do that and, uh, if I, if I sign off on that and, but you would still see everything.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, anything else?
No.
All right, public comment period. All right.
Too late.
You forgot your part, I, I looked. There were no hands. There were no hands. You gotta be quick on the draw, man.
I just have a couple of things, while Janice here, people are asking me what's going on at Don's Pond at the spillway.
Good question. What's going on at Don's Pond at the spillway?
I am saving the town hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay, good job.
Can you elaborate?
Yes, I can. A little louder, Jamie. Basically what happened is we have this another thing every five years, there are dam inspections.
Yep.
That are done. The company, the engineers come out, they inspect the dams, they find deficiencies in the dam, and then the town gets a report, the water department gets a report, so. These have been ongoing things. Actually, it's kinda funny, I've got a copy of it somewhere of the deficiencies that have been going on, yeah, since, here's a report from two thousand and eleven. Deteriorated concrete meets and respillway, channel four, which is what I'm working on. Low-level outlet, which is the gate valve that actually allows me to drain the pond in an emergency that is inoperable and silted in, it says, vertical hairline cracks on concrete walls. Basically, all this kinda simple concrete work that needs to be done, I have to drain down the pond first. So that's why I lowered the level to it, so I can start fixing the spillway and gatehouse repairs that need to be done. As long as, I've already talked to certain entities, as long as I do not change the slope pitch size of the spillway, I am allowed to grout and re-point the stonework that's in there. I can do that without an engineer. If I have to change anything structurally to it, I have to get engineers involved, which is a massive process and like I said, hundreds of thousands of dollars there, so.
Yeah, but you don't have to do any of that, so it's fine. Excellent.
That's what that's all about, so it's basically for that. And then also, I mean, it was done years ago for weed control as well. But back then it was done with the gatehouse and the wheel. Now I'm doing the suction and pipes, so.
Well, there's, people have been asking me.
Yeah, people have been asking me, all the fishermen are very upset about it.
Hopefully the people that watch this show get that and they'll spread.
Yep, they can help spread the word.
Everybody watches this.
You can vote eight.
Four thousand five hundred.
But the word will get spread and thank you.
You're welcome, yep.
So while we're talking on the subject, replacing the gate valve.
We might not have to replace it. Like I said, if I drain it down far enough, I can see the actual pipe. The report says it's silted in, so if it's something more than draining down the pond far enough to get an excavator arm down there and scoop out the silt, so be it. If not, then we're gonna have to get project costs and whatnot to have a dive team go down and get into it that way. Which is not cheap because we just did the horse pond gatehouse last year and it was like ten thousand dollars for them to be in there for about an hour's worth of work, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah, so let's hope.
Great.
Hope that it's not that.
What else you got, John?
Bead's Observatory.
Okay.
I talked to the carpenter and he said his price would go up around two thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because of inflation and if you have to do, uh, prevailing wage for that project.
Okay.
Doesn't have to, it won't go up as much, but it's, uh, we just got back.
So he's gonna have a helper?
He's gonna have a helper because of the beads or.
Okay.
He has to get a, a list up there. So I can get a call, another call from him.
Yeah, why don't you?
If you guys are good with that, he said around, so I'll have him write it down, you know, from fifteen to around seventeen. So.
Yeah, so if you could.
With that, I'll have him re-quote it.
Please.
And I'll, he can, uh, get that to me and I'll get it down to you.
Okay.
Could I, uh, could you stop by the office and I'll get a prevailing wage form because it would be prevailing wage if he's got an employee?
I didn't know he had a, a helper. He said on that project you'll have somebody. He doesn't normally work with somebody, but for that project, because of the high etc.
Yep, makes sense.
I'll get the form for you.
Okay.
I, I have to get it. It has to be, uh, requested by the town. He can't do it himself.
Tomorrow, good?
I can make the request tomorrow and they usually return it within twenty-four hours.
Who's that?
The state.
Oh, okay. What, does he have to sign it and everything or?
No, it's just a, it's just a, uh, a page with numbers all over it, but he has to.
I thought that could be anybody else to focus on, like he's still.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, um.
Exactly how they do it, you know, is this to cap it?
Just capping it for now because when Gary Madrazo passed away.
Yeah.
He was gonna do it with Kenny. For nothing, but he passed away and Kenny, I believe, is still interested in keeping going.
So this would be for like a, a rubber roof or a. So this would be for like a, a rubber roof or a fiber roof on top of it?
Rubber roof, retrotracted with a hangover.
Yep.
So we could cut it out where the bricks are.
Yep.
And keep going with the bricks. Just keep Kenny still.
And are there any plans for the demolition material on the inside of that?
Not, not yet.
Not yet, yeah.
And I got off the board, otherwise I wouldn't have done it.
I hear you.
What else, yeah?
I'm still seeing fences go up and stuff next to the road and sidewalks. Another one just went up. I forget where I was today. And to the planning board, we just made a new fence rule and stuff. Has it been approved yet, Bill?
Not by the AG, no.
Not by the attorney general, but to keep fencing back and everything, so we have to keep an eye on that because there's people building fences and block walls and brick walls and planting trees right next to the roadway. And we do have an issue over on, on one road you guys are aware of. Letters went out.
Yep.
Everything was ignored and, uh, we gotta, almost have to say, stop doing that because we're going to have to get some of these taken down because we're losing real, the town in North Brookfield is losing real estate every time somebody puts a fence on town property or builds a wall or, and we had the same thing over the playground, too.
Mm-hmm.
It's happened, so. I don't know how you get that going, but once we get the fenced thing through the planning board, we'll have something. There is already something on, on, in the bylaws because the town has a right of way. 10 feet in, everybody ignores it, so.
Bill?
I think the bylaw is effective even though the AG hasn't formally approved it yet because everything gets approved as of the day of the town meeting vote.
Right.
And so I think either they have to be put on notice that this is now effective and they should wait until full approval of the AG and nothing should be constructed in that, or period from town meeting to the AG approval.
So we need a couple of fence viewers.
Sounds like it.
So I'll entertain a motion to appoint, uh, Bill King and John Tripp as fence viewers. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
I had asked you about that before. Brandon came up with some state regulations. It's all written nice and everything, but kind of doesn't pertain to us in, in what's happening here because we don't have people putting fences up between each other. We have them putting fences up on town property.
So was there a size requirement for a fence, if, for a building permit?
It's over six feet tall.
Yeah, and even under six feet, people can just put up a fence?
But we all, our regulation does.
Not on town property.
Corner lots can only be what, three feet high on the corner?
For the first 15 feet either side of the intersection.
And they have to be in, on your property line, not at the street's edge.
Sure.
People, one just went up, I wish I could remember where it was, but, uh, it's blatant. It's a nice brand new wood fence right next to the sidewalk, about six inches from the sidewalk. So when the plow goes down, not that we're supposed to plow the sidewalks, but we do it as a courtesy when they can get by sidewalk guy and then they'll complain because the sidewalk's not done. Well, if you can't get down the sidewalk with the snowball, you put the fence up. Can we go after that person and say, you're going to take your fence down?
Move it.
I think all of these people, everybody that puts up fences in this area should get a copy of our new bylaw and the bylaw that was existing with the right of way from the town. All the fence people around here should have that so that when they come out to North Brookfield, they don't put a fence up. Kind of late for a couple of them, but I know there's one block wall that should not be grandfathered because they were informed right when it went up. It was on the wrong property and they ignored the, at least, did you do three?
I think there was two sent out.
Two sent out and then you did a registered one that never came back.
Never came back, yeah.
So there were actually three notices that went out to the spirit that were ignored and we're just, we're going to keep losing property.
Well, thank you for that. Jamie?
Who's actually in charge of making it? Would the fence viewer themselves be enforcing this, like saying, here, here's a fine? I mean, is there fines involved or is it?
It would be the building inspector. Because he's also the zoning enforcement officer.
So the fence viewer would report to?
The fence viewer is a little more complicated, I think.
So the building inspector would have to drive around and look for these unless there's a complaint.
Okay.
And he's only part-time, so it's kind of difficult. So to have him just drive around looking for things like that is.
So that's what the fence viewer does, is to find these things and then report it to him and he can go on?
I suppose in theory, but.
I think it's more.
I think the fence viewer has been.
Between neighbors than.
Yeah.
Between the town and a resident, but I think we could tailor it to.
Well, we could, we'll, we'll have to.
Fence viewer would be all.
We'll have to look into that, but, um.
Well, building inspector wasn't informed about that particular one. I know he went down there.
Yeah, um, so the, the fence viewer thing has been a thing a lot longer than there's been building inspectors.
Right.
Yeah.
So. All right, what else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, wait, announce, announce. Special town meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, July 31st at 6:00 PM here in the police department. And I can't remember exactly what it's about, so I'm so sorry.
It was to transfer funds into an account so that we can close on the USDA loan. We need $50,000 in a, in a retained earnings account for sewer, or not retained earnings, but in a separate account for the USDA loan.
Right.
From making to the plan.
Yes, yep, thank you.
And you need 10 people.
We need at least 10 people, so please come.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.